Good evening. This is the Town of Eastchester Planning Board Meeting of May 26, 2022. If everyone will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to do the roll call. Mr. Nemec.
Present.
Mr. Louis Campania.
Present.
Anthony Giacobi.
Present.
Jim Bonanno's here, and Mark Cunningham is in transit, we've been told. So we're going to start without him, and then he's just going to jump in when he gets here. So the first application is 22-20, Jack's Bar and Restaurant, 219 Main.
Hi. I'm Shane Clifford. I'm the owner of Jack's Bar and Restaurant. Unfortunately, our architect couldn't be here today, so I will answer whatever questions you have to the best of my ability.
Sure. Okay. Well, tell us what it is that you're just in a...
If you could grab the mic, swing it around here, and just sort of point to the pictures and tell us what you're thinking.
Yeah. So basically, on the side of the building, we just want to put a small outdoor area here. We had it during COVID for two years, and then obviously the COVID permit is not available anymore, so we just want to extend it. This is on our property line. It's not interfering with the street, so we don't really think it's going to be much of a hindrance to the town or anyone around us.
Sure. What's presently being done there to the sidewalk? Like the one on the...
Say that again.
The one go right... Now, the pictures, there's...
Oh.
Yeah, yeah. What's that picture?
Here?
I know what that one is. What's the one below it?
This one here?
Yep.
So that is our property there. That's where we want to put the outdoor seating. I actually have better pictures behind me if you want me to pass them up.
No, that's fine. I just... That's the general condition of the sidewalk right now.
Yeah, and I did ask them to provide some better pictures, so I think that might be helpful if they could, if you could at least give them to us.
Yeah.
Is the gravel surface, is that going to stay, or are you planning on replacing that with a different surface?
Concrete.
Concrete.
Although I think when we spoke to you the other day, if you do concrete, that will require a stormwater management facility, like a dry well. One thing that we discussed, I think, was potentially a wood deck over the gravel, which then you would not be required to install any stormwater facilities. So you may want to think about that in terms of the cost and whether you, how big the cul-de-sac chamber has to be.
Well, whatever ye want us to do, we will definitely do. But we did speak to, hold on. Yeah, we spoke to the Highway Department, and they said the storm drains were fine for the water flow off.
Okay, they did not have a problem with you doing that?
No. But a decking, we can do also. I think a decking might even look nicer.
Okay. The problem with tying into the town storm drains is that our zoning law requires that the stormwater be retained on site, so I'm not sure that the Highway Department, they have the authority to do that for overflow, et cetera, but for, to accommodate your drainage, we would have to discuss that with him.
So if we did a decking, what we do is we dig down and we keep the decking flush. So then it'd be as is basically right now.
I will have to say, I think years ago, it was quite a few years ago, I think it was Casa Brusco that got an approval for outdoor dining. They never installed it, but they also, they proposed wood decking at that time, and it was approved by this board.
Okay.
And again...
And was it in the same location as this?
Yeah, it was proposed in the same location. They just never installed it. And again, it's, it's, well, the board can tell you what they would prefer. From my, my point, it's not really a preference. It's whether you understand that you would have to install storm drainage facilities and that, you know, there's a cost and a size consideration.
And that is if we did the concrete?
If you did the concrete.
Okay.
If you did decking with just a gravel base under it, then you don't have to.
That wouldn't be a problem for us.
Okay.
And I think there's, there's actually, as you suggested, might look better with the wood. It's a little bit more welcoming, and it doesn't get quite as hot.
I agree.
It's softer on the feet.
Would you mind just fixing that drawing?
You're not the first, we just dealt with an application last month from Haiku, I think it was, that it was the same, same issue that they had had outdoor seating for the last two years during COVID, and thankfully, we're kind of putting COVID a little bit in the rearview mirror, even as it continues to persist. But I understand where, you know, people have gotten used to outdoor seating and like it.
Yeah.
And if this, can you answer this question, though, for me? Did, you used this area for outdoor seating the last two years, right?
This has been, yeah.
And did you have any issues at all with respect to...
Zero.
Okay.
Yeah, no complaints, no noise complaints, no anything.
Is that, Margaret, is that true to your knowledge?
Absolutely. We never received any complaints.
Okay, good. Do you plan on doing tables and chairs, or is it be picnic tables like that?
It'll be tables and chairs, yeah. High-top tables. Yeah, easier.
See, that's why the photographs were a little confusing, because they show picnic tables. So that, that's existing conditions, but now you're proposing these, they're kind of, did you say high-top tables?
Yeah. Well, we only opened during COVID, so basically what we used here was the cheapest material possible. We used picnic benches.
So I think when this moves forward, the tables and their layout will be correct, and the Building Department will review it to make sure, the Fire Department will review it to make sure that it's...
Yeah, so typically, even with COVID, when we are issuing the temporary permit, the Building Inspector and the Fire Inspector went out to ensure that the tables were spaced properly, that doors weren't blocked. And again, in this area, it's a pretty limited area, so there's a couple of places you can't put a table, because it would block an egress door. So it's pretty simple. I mean, honestly, you just go out and look at it.
And during COVID, you had to deal with the six feet apart as well.
Right.
Yeah, that was tough, too. Yeah, yeah.
Right, you wanted to deal with that.
Yeah.
And these are all going to be tables and chairs that will go into the restaurant or in some other storage facility for the evening?
Yeah.
When you're not...
Right, right behind here, we have a storage facility for everything.
Good.
We've already moved a woodshed from there with this in idea, so we can put them there at nighttime.
Hey, Gary, could you zoom in on the tables? The layout on upper left.
The detail, yeah.
Yeah, keep going. Yeah, that's it.
No, actually, it's, Gary, it's the...
Bottom right.
It's the detail of the table in the bottom right corner of the drawing.
Okay, I want to just see how the tables were laid out first.
Oh, plan. I don't, in all honesty, that's not a realistic plan.
It's changed, that's my point, right?
Yeah, yeah. I think the architect was hurrying to just get something out there. So, and then the planters are going to be at the perimeter along the...
Yeah, separate the sidewalk from us, basically.
And we're not talking about having umbrellas or warnings or anything like that, right?
We would probably use umbrellas, yeah, but if we didn't have to, or we're told we didn't, we wouldn't.
You're permitted to have umbrellas. I think if you, if you do that, you should at least run the, a color sample, you know, through, by me, and I might have just the sign committee look at it.
Yeah. Well, by law now in New York, you can't use beer company umbrellas anymore or anything. So whatever you'd be buying would be a lot nicer than, say, a cheap Stella umbrella that you see. They changed the law recently, so you can't have branded umbrellas in the state of New York anymore.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay. I think we understand what's going on here, right?
Okay. But this, this is just an initial, we're not voting on this.
No, this one, this one, unless you want to have them come back in June, this, this you would be actually approving. I don't know whether you want to approve it, I mean...
We're trying to get them open for the summer.
Yeah, I think the conditions would be that they do the wood deck, that the tables and chairs are, the spacing is approved by the Fire Department and the Building Department. And if, and if there's, if there's any proposed umbrellas that you, yeah, definitely no advertisement for it.
Yeah.
So, and I can tell you already what the sign committee or the architectural, you're not required to go to the Architectural Review Board, but if you were, they don't want anything too bright, you know, it's sort of, and I don't know what your color scheme is on the front, but like a, you know, a burgundy or a blue or something like that.
It's a tiled roof.
Yeah. Yeah, or something to match the tiled roof. That would be nice.
That's a condition.
It would be a very neutral color.
Yeah, that, that would be...
The building looks neutral.
Yeah, yeah. So I, again, it's your comfort level with, there's a lot of kind of loose ends, but on the other hand, it's not rocket science either, so...
I think the intent is to come up with enough, enough conditions to apply to this to allow you to move, to continue, such that we don't have to have you back over and over. That's okay with the board.
It doesn't, doesn't do you much good if we approve this in late September. So, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with, with the conditions, Margaret.
And they've been very cooperative.
Yes.
And so I, I think if there's something that I'm concerned about, I think they would be responsive to that, but a bit again, I think I have a...
Your main query would be the concrete and the decking, right?
Yes, so you, they, wait, say that again.
Your main, your main objection would be between the concrete and the decking, right?
Well, do the board, do you think you prefer the decking? Would you like to make that a condition? I think that would look a lot classier.
To know if they could go with concrete, is that really an option, or are we going to say code requires, or?
Well, again, the code requires that you retain, and everybody's required to do that, so as much as I appreciate the Highway Superintendent saying that he wouldn't have a problem with it, he does not have the authority to essentially grant a variance from the zoning law.
Yes.
So the concrete would be fine if they would prefer that, and if they can fit the, a dry well in there. If, if they want to go to the expense of installing a dry well, and if they can fit it, that's fine. If they would, if they don't, Jay and I just recommended the decking as an alternative that you would not have to consider. So do you want it to be their preference as long as they comply with the law, or do you want to propose the other?
Mr. Clifford, do you have a preference? I mean, we don't want to tell you, well, I like the wood, so you have to do wood. Do you have a preference knowing that the concrete is going to require a drywall installation?
If that's what's needed with the concrete, I'd prefer to do the decking, because it would be faster and easier.
Yeah, and I, I actually think you can require the wood if you think that would look better.
I do, yes. I, I think it would, but my own opinion, you know, I defer to others as well. That's just one, one person's opinion.
I guess the question is...
But because the speed, the ability to get it done is important for you, and you can make that decision right here on the spot, right?
Yeah.
You can commit that if we, if we give you an approval for the wood decking, you'll do the wood decking. That's fine by me, yeah.
Okay.
Just an insight about the wood. Our zoning allows sidewalks to be wood-decked?
That's not a sidewalk. That's adjacent to the sidewalk. Yeah, so that's their private property. That was landscaped previously, so there were shrubs and bushes in there.
Yeah.
And then the previous approval, again, many years ago, they proposed wood decking. And right now, it's just gravel.
So...
And it's wood decking.
Another solution could possibly be stepping stones and gravel, but I don't know if that would then be considered impervious.
The stepping stones, believe it or not. And also, if you're thinking about it, you're putting tables, and people are walking, and they're in heels, and, you know...
Yeah. It's way more trouble for somebody slipping and falling if you put the stones in.
Yeah, and also just like, to me, the decking looks more clean and finished and not temporary, like people are putting tables out in the parking lots or whatever. Again, to me, it's a better look.
I think the board prefers wood. It's your application, so you could do as you, as you wish, but...
Or tracks.
Yeah, I think when you say wood, I'm probably meaning tracks, yeah. But again, in all honesty, I don't think...
That's my partner there. He's going to build it, and he's saying wood.
Yeah. And I think you should be clear, I don't think you should, you know, no offense, I don't think you, that's the whole reason they're here, for site plan approval. So to say, well, it's whatever you want.
No, no, that's why I want, if the applicant is saying he prefers wood, I prefer wood, we, I say we make wood the requirement, if, assuming nobody else has an objection.
Right.
Wood, track, anything that appears to look like wood, yeah.
Yeah. I think that's a good approach. The one thing that I would suggest is, if it were to be wood, which I think it will be, it should probably be constructed in a way where it could be lifted, so the underside could be cleaned.
Yeah.
Especially with people eating and so on and so forth. So, that's it.
I get what you're saying, yeah. Because food falling up, yeah.
Right, through the, those spaces in the decking.
So we've got the conditions that you went through previously, we're agreeing it's a wood deck.
Yeah.
And then do we have to go through the special permit requirements, or you have a written version?
Well, I actually read them all. So for the outdoor dining, they're, they are, you know, they actually read, they comply with all the requirements. They did provide a written section to me. So what you should do is, if they approve it tonight, which it sounds like they are, just get a, a plan to meet a review first before you submit a more formal application for a building permit. Not that there's much for a building permit there, just for the deck, I guess.
Yeah.
Just submit a plan to me before you start constructing anything.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think we're good up here. We have to do a public hearing and take comments from the public if there are any, so just stand by. Hopefully it won't go over. So I make a motion to open the public hearing on application 22-20, Jack's Bar and Restaurant, 219 Main.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No comments? So then, motion to close the public hearing on the same application, 22-20, Jack's Bar and Restaurant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So subject to the conditions Margaret said previously, I think we're good. So then I make a motion to approve this application, 22-20, Jack's Bar and Restaurant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Cheers.
You're welcome.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
The next application is 22-17, 16 Graystone Circle.
Good evening, board. My name is Adama Irafa. I'm a community floor engineer. I'm Jeff, the applicant CEO. We are employing a new residence at 16 Graystone Circle. This project is part of a subdivision that was before you left. It's known as 20 Graystone Circle, which that is the residence to the right of this one. Oh, it's awkward. Oh.
Hello?
Okay, that's better, sorry.
You're just being soft-spoken.
Yeah. So, again, yeah, it's part of the subdivision last year. It's situated in the R10 zoning district. So 20 Graystone Circle is to the right, our residence is in the middle, and to the left is 10 Graystone Circle. And as you, basically, the property slopes as you continue up Graystone Circle. It slopes from the beginning of the property towards the end, and as well as from front to back. So what we did...
Slope which way?
So it's higher...
Slope's up or slope's down?
Slope's down, as you go to the rear of the property, but as you continue up Graystone Circle, it slopes out. So basically, to, you know, gain, you know, to take advantage of the topography, we situated the driveway on the left side of the property at the lower elevation. It's a two-car attached garage, and the rear of the residence will have a walkout from the basement, and then a deck at the first floor level. And then to better, I guess, flatten the grade in the area and the rear yard, we are proposing a, just a three-foot-high retaining wall around the rear of the residence. It's an interlocking stone wall. And then, basically, right adjacent to the proposed wood deck, there's an existing stone retaining wall. That, we're going to continue, just that stone wall just underneath the deck to create a little bit of a platform and to, you know, hold the grade from the rest of the rear yard. Just go... So basically, the elevations and finishes throughout the home, they're very common throughout the neighborhood. There's going to be hardy plank siding. There's a mixture of shake siding in the front and lap siding. And then the rest of the house will have regular lap siding on the sides and the rear. There'll be a stone, a real thin stone veneer on the front porch, and then a water table flanking both sides of the garage. The windows are Anderson 400 Series windows. They're in a black color. The siding is a gray slate, so it's sort of a mid-tone gray color. And then the asphalt architectural shingle roof is in a charcoal color as well, to tie in the windows, and the front door and garage door are in a black finish. Rest of the elevations and as well as the chimney will be a stone veneer as well to match the front. Basically, the front streetscape, just to see what it looks like with the neighboring residents. Again, this is 20 Graystone Circle, picks up some ideas with, you know, the style of the front portico. We have similar aesthetics going on with our proposed residence. And then the house to the left is sort of a central colonial home, but again, that same sort of consistency with the double garage on the left side. And then there was a, obviously, the new residence, so there's a complete new landscape plan done by Bob Tremontano, and, you know, your basic planting along the property lines, some flowering bushes and whatnot in the front, and then also concealing the AC units. They're tucked away on the left side of the property, right behind the proposed garage. It's sort of at a lower elevation, so you can't really see them from the street or anything. This is, again, just a rendering of what the finished product would look like. Then in regards to the site, obviously, the town engineer had come out and witnessed deep hole tests and percolation tests for suitable soils for onsite stormwater mitigation. I'll go back to the site plan. So basically, there'll be stormwater units in the front yard and rear yard. The, any of the existing impervious surfaces are going to be removed, and all of the proposed surfaces will be captured onsite. We did receive comments from Keller Sessions today, and they're very minor conditions that will continue to adhere with the town engineer.
How many dry wells?
About, what's that?
How many dry wells?
Oh, yeah, there's quite, well, obviously, we designed for 100-year storms, so when you don't have the most favorable percolation tests, then we have to, you know, add as much as possible. There's shallow units, too, so a little bit smaller than the normal units, so there's a little bit more than what typically the bigger units would, capacity can hold.
Do you use the shallow units because of the nature of the soil?
Exactly, yeah. So the depth of clay or whatnot, so if that's the case, then...
Yeah. You can't, you can't put them down that deep.
Exactly. We have to have a certain separation from water or...
Okay, yep, that makes sense.
It's very handsome. I like it. Yeah, I don't have any questions.
Where's, show me again where the retaining wall in the back is going to be?
Sure. So this dark, you know, sort of grayed-out space are the retaining walls. Again, they're just three foot in height, and then also to the left of the driveway in order to create a, you know, flat grade there, there's just retaining wall there, and then steps to the rear yard.
So in the, it basically goes around almost the entire property line in...
Of the rear yard.
From, from the rear, yeah.
Exactly.
Okay.
Just to create, so what happens is, when you walk out, this patio area is in the basement level, so when you walk out the basement level, you have a flat, you know, sort of rear yard area. Then you could also walk down the deck, down the portion of the existing stone wall that would be modified, to get to that level. Same sort of concept is happening to the house to the right. They have different levels because the, the site, you know, slopes from the front to back.
Is there, is there any screening, any plantings that are screening the house here from the houses on...
Yeah, sure. So this, this is the proposed evergreen screening, actually, on that side, and then also in the, you know, at the down level of the retaining wall.
Okay, good.
Here, there's existing, I don't know if there are cedars that are remaining.
That is the landscape plan?
This is the landscape plan, yeah. Should be in the...
It's in the package, kind of.
That's a one-car or two-car garage? Two-car garage, yeah. It's one big, yeah. Yeah. Well, just one. Giant one, yeah. Sixteen-foot door.
Okay. No more comments from here. I make a motion to the, open the public hearing to application 22-17, 16 Graystone Circle.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So I make a motion to close the same public hearing on the same application, 22-17, 16 Graystone.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So what are our conditions, then? So the, our engineers looked at the, the stormwater and made comments and...
Yes, so he, they, he still had some outstanding comments, but as Adamo said, they were very minor, and Joe did confirm that he felt it was appropriate to approve it, subject to these conditions. So the two conditions would be the same, that you always impose for new construction. One is that the engineering plans are subject to final review and approval by Keller Sessions, our town engineer, and that prior to the issuance of a CO, we need a letter from the landscape architect indicating that the plants that have been installed are in accordance with the approved landscape plan.
So subject to those conditions, unless those are the comments from us, I'm making a motion to approve application 20, oops, application 22-17, 16 Graystone Circle.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do we give you back your samples?
I have these here, okay.
Thank you. Have a nice summer. If we don't see you again.
Good night.
And a good night. Next application is 22-21, Westchester Meat Market, One Mill Road.
My name is Joe Fernandez. I'm an architect. 575 White Plains Road, Eastchester, New York. We're proposing a meat market with a cook line and some interior seating at the old 3D cleaners. The, there'll be no enlargement to the existing facilities. They're going to essentially sell aged beef and also be able to provide a short type of a menu based on meats that I guess they have ready for cooking. The application will be a total new fit-out. Majority of the space will be an open kitchen for the butchers. And for housing of meat, there'll be a walk-in box that'll be adjacent to the rear entrance. It's been the front, Mill Road, and the rear parking area, and the library and municipal parking in the back. You can walk down the street. I mean, I always came in here to the cleaners, okay? But, so this area here is essentially the, the open area, which will be for the, for the butchers, with display counters, grab-and-goes, a rear counter, front counter, more displays. They'll have their machinery there, be able to do their butchering. They have a wash area, this short cook line here in the center, the walk-in box. We're planning on having a glass panel, so you can kind of see the meats that are there for sale, two ADA bathrooms, and small accessory offices. And essentially, you know, we're here for that special use approval of the restaurant slash cook line. And that's, that's really it.
What is the seating?
So there's, there's a little bit of seating here in the front. So there's, there's a little bit of seating here in the front, we just show, you know, a couple in the window at this point, I think it'd be nice to be able to sit and just kind of look out at, at traffic. There is some, some greenery you can see on some of the other photos we have, and all of those boxes are on this particular building's property, so we investigated that and found that out to be true. So it's kind of a, a nice little spot to kind of relax for a few minutes, maybe grab a quick language or something.
What are the contemplated hours of operation?
I believe it's, let me, let me just ask, what did we say, 10?
Nine to six.
Nine to six, I'm sorry, I should have known that.
Your special permit says eight to seven.
Eight to seven, that's what I meant to say.
Approximately eight to seven, nine to six.
And is that, is that seven days a week, or?
Not, six days a week.
Yeah.
What's on the menu?
So, you know, they're gonna have all kinds of aged beef and poultry and different things like that, so it's, I think it's gonna be whatever, you know, whatever that special is for, for the week, but it'll definitely be something either grilled or broiled or something, so.
Not a good spot for...
I mean, we have a 12-foot cook line, essentially.
Not a good spot for vegans?
Only if no one's watching. Sorry, Margaret.
So as far as garbage collection, it's in the back?
It's in the same place it was for the dry cleaner, which was around, around the back on the side, they have two, it looks like three-yard containers. Now, that could potentially change to a more hybrid-type container, that wasn't discussed yet, but for pickups, and they can have multiple pickups based on their, their usage.
Yeah, I just want to say that in the past, we have had trouble with certain, not with this particular site, but, but there was a dry cleaner in that particular space. So in a number of the shopping centers that have food service-related businesses, we have quite a few problems with the dumpsters not being carted away, or, you know, the waste not being carted away often enough, with the dumpsters not closing securely enough, with having rodents and that kind of thing. So I, you know, maybe be very, maybe you can provide us much more specific information about the type of dumpster, because it's gonna be, I'm assuming, shared with the pizza parlor now too? And is it shared with the pizza place, in terms of the dumpster?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so, so again, you're adding almost 50% of gross floor area of the entire building is now, you're gonna have some food waste and things, so, so just be very clear about what's being proposed there and how often pickups will be, and you may want to have a condition that we have some authority. One of the things that we've had in the past, where we've had difficulty with dumpsters, with food service-related, is, is it becomes very hard for us to require that they have additional pickups, and that, you know, we haven't, we're on top of them constantly, so I'd rather make sure that issue is resolved ahead of time.
Mr. Chairman, just to add to that, in addition to the appropriate amount of pickups that the sanitation company is doing, also the size of the dumpsters themselves...
Oh, absolutely.
...can be factored into how often they have to be picked up. We've had situations in the past where the dumpsters were too small, and so they weren't able to close properly, and that necessitated additional pickups, and there were, you know, a lot of enforcement issues, so that may be something that should be included.
Yeah, I mean, the existing containers that are there, I believe, are three-yard containers, and, and that's a fairly good-sized container, and I know even when 3D was there, with cardboard and other debris that they had, it, it kind of worked. Now, this, my particular client is also a restaurant owner here in town, from the Sea Grill, so, I mean, I don't see that ever going to be an issue, and whatever the pickups that are required, obviously, you know, comply, he's gonna keep a nice clean place, just like his restaurant.
Okay.
What, what, sorry, do you coordinate with the pizzeria? I mean, it's unusual that you'd share, right?
I think there's two, two separate dumpsters there, there's two of them.
Right.
Right, yeah, they're side, they're side by side, but they're in the same location.
One is theirs, one is yours.
Correct, correct.
And as of now, you're gonna figure out if yours is big enough or suitable for your business, theirs remains as is.
Right.
Will, will you be using the same company to, so that you, you don't have two separate companies coming in, carting companies?
I, I would think so, and I think that they're the company also that, that operates for the restaurant as well, so.
Yeah, it's a good idea, if possible.
One of the things, in terms of an enforcement issue potentially, that's out there, we've had situations in the past where multiple store owners that were adjacent to each other were sharing the same dumpster and the same pickup service, and it became almost unenforceable where one person says, well, my people clean up back there, or, yeah, that's not our garbage, and I don't know if you could build a condition in there that there is some type of waste management plan, or that each individual store owner has their own, or is responsible for their own separate dumpsters or pickup or something, but just in terms of planning ahead, that, that's an issue.
Well, they, they have their own separate dumpsters, which is fine, but I, I'm just thinking of neighbors, you know, who would be subjected to multiple pickups if you're not coordinating, and I don't know, you know, what we can do to...
Yeah, well, I think that you could ask for additional information with regard to, and, and this, in this case, one of the tenants owns the building under any circumstances, so it should be easy to coordinate with the owner of the building with regard to, you know, who they use for pickups, whether the, and, and your client would know whether the dumpster is appropriately sized. I, I think you just need to provide more detailed information about that, because that is always a concern, and, and I, and I know your client doesn't, you know, he wants it to operate successfully as well.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, and I, I used 3D cleaners all the time when it was in operation, and I know that little parking area that you're talking about in the rear was, I, I guess it worked for people just running in and grabbing their, their...
If you could get a spot, yeah.
If you could get a spot, but there was always the risk, of course, that you'd be blocked in by someone in back of you, so I'm assuming that's not gonna be used as a, an active parking area, right?
No, no. I think, right now, the, the owner's using it for his employees, but we don't plan on using any of that, I mean, we have the municipal and the street.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, parking is definitely gonna be an issue, yeah.
Yeah, so, so this, this is before you, for preliminary review, it will be referred to the zoning board. The area variance sounds so exaggerated, which I know the client is a little bit, you know, concerned about, but it, that dry cleaner was there for so, like, for decades, decades, and that only required like six parking spaces, so any use other than a dry cleaner that goes in that space is going to require a variance, only because it's increasing the parking demand for zoning compliance purposes, so it sounds pretty extreme, but there is that library parking lot, there is the street parking.
Yep.
Right, but the applicant's aware of the parking situation, and as was the dry cleaner, the difference between the two?
But I mean, and not to, not to talk so much about the parking, because that's really not for you guys, but, I mean, majority of this area is gonna be for two to three people, tops, you know, so it's, I don't, I mean, the cleaners had, I believe, five people working there, all shifts, but I, I just, I don't see it as an issue. I mean, I, I've gone there for most of my life to go to that cleaners, and, and with, with Tony there, and...
But I think the trip duration for the cleaners is far less than it would be for your establishment.
I would think that the market might be a little longer, but again, I, I don't think you're gonna get, I mean, people need cleaning more than they need to pick up aged beef.
Yeah, it might, it might be, it might be a larger...
You'd hope that it's about the same.
The quantity might be greater, but the, the duration of the stay might be shorter, but maybe not, I don't, we'll, we'll have to figure this out.
As you said, right, that's up to the zoning board, we're just here to sort of prove this, so, I like the idea. I don't have any questions, so it's a public hearing, so. Again, make an open, make a motion to open the public hearing on this application, 22-21 West Chester Meat Market, One Mill Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So our job, are we okay? I'm sort of thinking we are ready to refer this to ZBA, so we could close this, or we, no, it comes back, right?
You'd still have to leave it open, but you could refer to the ZBA.
Right, right, so if we don't have any other questions or comments, I'm okay with letting the ZBA make their determination, I don't want to get involved in it.
Likewise.
Cool, so then...
And then maybe, well, we'll do that, and then we'll talk about the potential meeting in July?
Yeah, sure, let's finish that, so I'll make the motion, I'll make the motion to refer this application to the ZBA for consideration of the area variance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Right, so, don't go yet, so now, so now what we're trying to do, Margaret has put forth, and maybe has discussed with you, is to get this in front of the ZBA, such that they can receive it this month, come back in July, make a determination, and, I don't know if we got a, anything from the guys on this board about a special meeting for that?
Say that again?
Did we get any comments on coming for a special meeting?
No, because I sent that email out so late, so I think we're gonna ask people now. So, so what...
Margaret, I did tell you I could make that meeting, come on!
Yeah, I did, one person, I, I need to give him credit. So I believe you did this last year as well, it's pretty common that you, under certain circumstances, have a special meeting just to wrap up old business, and that's because in this particular case, they, if they get the ZBA approval, that would be, the earliest that would be, would be in July, and then you don't meet in September, so that, you know, the applicant loses July and August and most of September, which is why in the past, you've had a special meeting in July just to wrap up old business, not for things that are being referred to other boards, and not for new business. I believe this would be the only application on that agenda, I believe we'd be able to do it remotely, I, I'm assuming that the law will still permit that, and also you wouldn't be tied to the typical planning board date, we would have some flexibility in the date. I would just have to, before, by the June meeting, we'd have to notice and publish the date of that meeting, and I'd have to notice it properly, but, so we'd have some flexibility in when that would occur.
So as far as the four of us, I'm okay with having a quick meeting in July to get this moving, are you guys?
Yeah, me too.
Okay, cool, so I imagine if Mark isn't, the four of us will be, make ourselves available...
But I, I don't think Cunningham's gonna be available on that day.
Yeah, I will, so I will coordinate with the board members what their availability is, and then let you know that.
And then we'll, we'll notice it?
No, you don't have to notice it, because it'll just be carried on the agenda, as long as I notice the date of the July meeting, the note, did you notice this one?
Yes.
Yes, as long as you notice this one, and as long as I note, when the, it'll be listed as adjourned for the June meeting, and then it'll be adjourned to the July meeting on that agenda, so no, you do not need to notice it, I, I just will take care of that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so the public hearing stays open, and we'll, so I'll see you in July.
Thank you.
Good luck with the ZBA.
Have a nice weekend.
Right, but first you go to the ZBA, good, thank you. The next and last application is 22-16 Chow Restaurant, opening space.
To the ZBA.
This project is in regards to the Chow Restaurant, it's an existing restaurant that we all know about it. Building is in regards to two items in the building, is the kitchen in the back for 240 square feet, and on top of the roof with a, with a 400, oh, sorry, 540 square feet of rooftop unit, that's existing, that we adding another roof on top of it, for, over the existing pergola. So the total is the, the 240 square feet and, and 411 square feet together. Also, what happens is that by adding those two items, it auses, it aughts that to, to create one more parking in the back, so the existing, that they, they have 29 parking spaces, and by adding another handicap area in the parking for an aisle, we lost the aisle, so that will require zoning for the parking itself.
In the proposed, we, in the proposed, we have 28 spaces, because we had to add two handicap spaces.
And also, what happened is that the parking itself, I mean, the, the unit on, on the top of the roof, rooftop unit, right now, it's at one foot five inches away from the existing parking, I mean, the, the, sorry, the, the, and so now, we ended up having zoning for it, so there are two zoning items, which buy the parking, as well as the building itself on the second floor.
So our front yard, the existing front yard permitted is 10 feet, and initially, when Tom had designed this, the, the existing structure eight years ago, it was an open gap, and just a covered entrance. Now that we are covering the rooftop, we'll have to go to zoning.
Subject to the setback requirements, got it.
And one foot six inch only for the front yard.
Right, I understand, thank you.
And, and the other calculation, you're saying with the existing 29, we only have 28 spaces now.
But I just want to clarify that, when you expand the building, then you're required to provide parking for the entire building, so even though you had existing 29, you created the, you lost one space because you created the access aisle for the handicap parking, so you have 28, but you're really required to have 43, so it's sort of similar to the other application that we just heard, so the variance is to allow 28 spaces where 43 are required.
And so what, what was the requirement before the contemplated addition here?
So, oh, that's a good question, so the addition...
Because it received a variance before, I mean, it wasn't, or noncompliant?
No, that was nonconforming before, and even if it had received a variance before, this is interesting, it's come up kind of recently with my land use council, the new variance still goes back to the beginning again, you know, so, let me see.
I understand that, but, I, just for, for our own perspective.
But yeah, how, what the increase would be, no, that's a good question, and I, I can't do math in my head anymore, so I'm doing it on the calendar, hold on.
Look, you can keep going.
So the addition would require five parking spaces, so, so that's all they're increasing the demand by five parking spaces.
Got it.
So this is, right now, we're just showing a general schematic design for, for the existing building right now, on the first floor, we're showing the amount of seats that we have in the dining, and this here is really the proposed kitchen that we're adding for, as, as the existing kitchen that we have, that has an existing fireplace and some pizza, as well as some kitchen in the back, and that is required, needed for, to add this area here for the, for the kitchen. And the place is in, it goes down below the level of the parking, and reaches by few, six, seven steps to, to go up, and then we also revised the area for the refuse next to it, can show you in... So what showed is the, the, the area here, right next to the parking, to be added, but also what we're doing on the second floor, the proposed, an indoor dining over the, on the roof, over the existing pergola, that's, that was there. So the same number of the seats that we are provided before, is, is, are be related again also.
It's the same, same layout that exists?
The seating numbers.
Is the same, got it.
This is the kitchen that we showed, it really has the details in it, we showed some lighting also, we'd like to know you in, in there, and, and this is the idea for the, the existing pergola, that is raised with a roof on top of it, if, if that's allowed. This is all the old design that we provided eight years ago for the place. And this is what the proposed design that we're working on later on to, to get to the Octa Share Review Board, with showing the windows in the, in the front, and...
So there'll be open glass doors, yeah.
So really, it's a very simple design, except for having a roof on top.
Can I, Tom, can you just clarify something to me, because you're kind of confusing me? You keep saying that you're just putting a roof on top of the pergola. Are you removing the pergola?
Yeah.
So, you're actually just enclosing the space. You're, you're not putting a roof over the pergola. The pergola's being removed, and you're creating an enclosed space. I, I just want to clarify that, because it sounds, it sounds like you're putting a roof over the pergola, but that's not what you're doing.
That's right, that's right, we're wrong about that.
So, explain what the materials are for the addition. I understand it's glass.
So, it, it's really a regular roof on top with the, with the.
As for the ceiling?
Right.
Yeah, to match the existing that's there.
Oh, got it.
And, and the windows really are, are just with wood and revised, just to.
They're just French door, open doors?
Probably, there'll be bi-fold doors.
Yeah.
And you're keeping the railings there?
Yes. Here, that's there.
Those are the existing?
Yeah.
Are the panels at the top, it's all the same clear glass? Because from the rendering, I really can't tell.
I'm sorry?
I can't tell from the rendering if all the glass is the same, or if the ones above are, are fritted or something. They look like they are, but they're not. Yeah, just go to the elevation, the rendering there.
Transom.
Yeah, the transom, right.
Small windows on top, yeah.
Transom, yeah.
Those are the same glass as the doors?
A transom, yeah.
Okay. They're reflecting the light from the sky, and they look blue, but none of them are, okay.
And this is the existing building right now that we have, here. And this is the back, of the back of the building, of Chow. And this is all the other buildings all around here.
So, the main, the main change here is, is changing that outdoor area, which I recall approving, you know, like you said, eight years ago, is that, is that how, yeah, I remember when you came before us back then. And at the time, it was to have available this additional outdoor seating, but it, so now you want to enclose that?
Right, because now, they found out that they can't use the place most, you know, most of the half of the year, so they decided to see if they can. And in the meantime, they can open the windows as much as they can when they're required.
Okay.
Tom, what's, what's the height of the, of the nano-wall doors? Overall height?
The height of the?
The doors.
The glass doors, Tom, these doors, the height of the?
Uh, these are, these are 10 feet.
And then, and then the transom is, what, another 24 inches?
Yeah.
It's the transom and the glass door included, right?
Yes, yeah.
So, overall, it's 10 feet.
10, 10 feet.
Is the new roof line going to be higher than the existing building, or same height?
Really, I mean, if, if you can see the existing, the roof right now that we have, so this is what's related to it.
So, it's slightly, slightly higher, yeah.
There you can see it, it's on.
So, how, how, how high are the ceilings then, in the new?
About three and a half feet higher than, than, so a total is 26 foot 9 to the roof. Really, it's only two levels, two stories.
And here, to the, to the ridge is 25 feet.
Yeah.
Right, but inside your addition, you're going to be open to above, you're not going to put a ceiling, right? You're going to see the shape of the roof above?
Yeah.
In, in the proposed addition, in other words, it's, it's, it's not going to have a ceiling, you'll see whatever the structure is, is that correct?
Well, it'll be insulation, I guess.
Are we planning to put a ceiling, or are we going to see the structure of, of the roof?
Yeah, it's going to be above.
Right, it's a beautiful.
So, we'll see a ceiling?
Yeah.
A raised ceiling.
Yeah, all ceiling.
Open.
Yeah, it should be. It's, it's a big space. Very nice. Okay, so, I have a comment. The work you do is very good, and I do like it, but not sure if it really matches everything else, the glass, right? And I guess, I'm not an architect, so that's just my opinion. It seems, it looks like it stands out on that corner.
So.
I know the corner well, and I've been there many times, but I know if it were to look like that, it's going to be, the first thing you're going to see is that. That's just, I don't know what we could do, if that's important, if that's what you're looking for.
I, I think the ARB will likely have a lot of comments about it, you know, with regard to, sort of similar to what the chairman is saying, with regard to the consistency with the character of the existing architecture, sort of the scale and the massing of it. So, so I, I think the, the ARB will look at it very closely.
Yeah. I mean, we, we thought about either covering with a, with a straight roof on top, or, or coming, I think this is the, the best situation right now to have a roof with an angle on top of it. It's a little bit high, but we're going to, we're going to keep the 10 feet inside to allow people to be there. So, look, we're still working on it.
Yeah.
My question is, based upon the comments, if the, I guess, structure, the perimeter of the box was the same stucco that the rest of the building is, it might look like it conforms more, is that what you're saying? Because I, I noticed that myself.
Yeah, I mean, I'm playing architect, as are all of us, that might be his intent, and I certainly will.
Yeah, I think that's, I think the, you know, that, that material choice is, is okay, because it does match the trim around, around the building. But perhaps it's a height thing, maybe the eve matches the height of the eve of the main building.
Well, and also, it's, it's, to me, it's kind of boxy, and you have the gable roofs on the side, and then it's a different type of roof there. I, you, you know, one of the problems you run into is if you make too many recommendations with regard to the architecture, then the, if the ARB goes in a completely different direction, I would definitely defer to them, but I, I, I do think just, I, I think they will be concerned about the, and again, not so much the glass, because I, I think people enjoy having a, you know, being in an area that's open and light and glass like that, but I, I think it's more going to be the, the massing and scale of it. And, and I don't know how you get around that when you, you know, have a particular area you want to enclose, but I'm, I, I think they're going to look in that in a lot of detail.
Yeah, we can, it's going to get better to, as we can, we'll finish it, as we get.
Yeah, I could definitely appreciate, you know, the, the reason that you first, that the applicant first came to us eight years ago, was to create this outdoor space, and by using glass, especially with the doors that can open up, you're preserving some piece of that while also making it weatherproof, basically. So, you can use it, I, I, so I understand the purpose behind it, but, as I said, I, I would definitely defer to our hard-working Architectural Review Board for their, their thoughts on, and maybe ideas as to how to, how to make this, how to maximize its, its aesthetics while still maintaining the functionality.
Is the terrace space outside the doors going to be usable, or once the doors are open?
Yeah, it'll be.
So, you could step out and step up to the railing?
Yeah.
About how many, 18 inches?
It's three and a half feet.
I'm sorry?
I mean, which one?
No, this one.
Yeah, just.
The railing.
I think it's really there for just, for guard rail, guard rail purposes.
Just to get air in, for the most part, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm good. If there's no more comments from us, this is a public hearing, or?
No, this is preliminary review. So, so the only thing that I did mention, there was some confusing, confusion with communication between me and the applicant, so, just when the applicant returns, and, and this is perfectly appropriate since it's not a public hearing now, under any circumstances, we do need you to provide written responses to the special permit requirements. And, 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 you know, those are almost like, Mr. King and I have to review those. If an applicant doesn't meet those, then you require variances from those special permit requirements, and it's just a way to help facilitate the review of the application for everybody, but that you understand that when you come back.
So, now, I'd like to mention to you that the special permit that we have, that we provided in here, it's almost, we're going to provide it, and provides almost everything that we have in here, related, with a couple of items with the hours of, in operation, which, which we'll know what it is as it comes in. And, and everything else, the landscaping and lighting and the architecture, which will end up finally, finally into it. But all these items that are going to be, are bringing in the special permit, which we're going to provide it to you the next time.
Sure.
Will, will be provided.
Yeah, I think that's Margaret's point, it just has to be in a, a written statement. That can be part of the record, so to speak, you know, that we can all evaluate, and, and this way, we're not, we're not trying to remember what was said at one meeting and it might vary from another.
Exactly, yeah, and you're not overlooking something. And, and also, sometimes, what, we honestly, years ago, when restaurants were approved, applicants often didn't realize that they had to meet those requirements. I mean, part of the reason to make them restate them is so that they understand there's certain restrictions and limitations, and, and that, like you said, it's part of the record.
Yeah. In my profession, I'm quite aware of that.
Okay.
Yes.
So then, if there's no more comments from here, we're going to refer.
Then we have to go to the zoning.
Yeah.
Yes.
To zoning situation.
Yeah, and then you would go, so you would be, excuse me, refer to the zoning board in, for July me, I mean, I'm sorry, for the June meeting. They will not make a determination until July, and so, and this would be the best-case scenario, so they do have a special meeting to make, for resolutions only, so they would meet to vote on the application in July. Then you would go to the Architectural Review Board in September, and again, best-case scenario, if the Architectural Review Board did not have you come back, you would be back to the Planning Board at the end of September.
Sure, you understand.
It's a process, you know it, right? This is the beginning. So then, to get you going, I'm going to make a motion to refer the application to the ZBA for consideration of the area variances.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's very nice, thank you. Have a nice evening.
You're welcome.
Have a nice summer.
Guess you're not here next week, next month.
So, and we also have the minutes to approve.
Yes, I definitely, subject to Phil's corrections, or is that?
Very significant correction, right, Jim?
That's the April 28th. So, I make a motion to approve the minutes of April 28th, 2022, with the subject corrections pointed out by Mr. Nemisak.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to close the Town of Eastchester Planning Board meeting of Thursday, May 26, 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.